16-08, we begin each minute with the Lord's Prayer and the Fledge of Allegiance for those who would care to join us.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily river, and we deserve our passes, and we forgive those who dress against us, and we give us not temptation, but the riches we need, the boundless kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have quite a few sets of minutes to approve here, so let's try to get through these. Can I have a motion to introduce open work session minutes, or actually legislative minutes from April 5th, 2016?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President says aye. Next, can I have a motion to introduce open work session minutes from March 15th, 2016 on poultry houses?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The President says aye. Next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from March 28th, 2016 on poultry houses. Can I have a motion to introduce those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President says aye. Next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from March 28th, 2016 on legislative bill 2016-03. Can I have a motion to introduce those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President says aye. All right, next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from April 5th, 2016 on Pirate's Wharf. Can I have a motion to introduce those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on these? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the President says aye. Approval, next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from April 5th, 2016 on the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center alcohol restriction. Can I have a motion to introduce those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President says aye. And lastly, we have approval of the open work session minutes from April 5th, 2016 on the Comprehensive Plan. Can I have a motion to introduce those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President says aye. Okay, Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on your agenda today is a request by the council for briefing on the impact on the Humane Society for the cost and care of over 300 puppies recently rescued from property near Coop Road in Wycomico County. Today before you is Mr. Aaron Val Sommo, the Director of Wycomico County Humane Society, and State's Attorney, Mr. Matthew Maserello.
Would you guys care to come join us? We just have, all right. Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Vice President and members of the county council. Happy, for the record, Matt Maserello, State's Attorney's Office, happy to give you a briefing on what occurred. I think Aaron might be on his way. He's been extremely busy managing this, what can only be described as a crisis. Several days ago, as you know, there was an operation, an investigation. Aaron was new to the Humane Society. He was receiving complaints about people that were keeping dogs in inhumane neglectful condition. Immediately, he went to work and got the sheriff of our county and all the personnel to go pay an inspection visit. They expected to find, I think, what I heard was, they expect to find about 35 dogs when indeed they found 310 dogs. The dogs were in very poor condition. Some of them just had been sitting in their feces for over a year. In fact, the veterinarian, when they observed and examined the dogs, the condition, the feces had almost calcified onto the hair, and it was very, very hard. And, you know, one of the vets opined that it had been that way for, you know, been that condition for at least a year. So, we immediately, when our office was notified, we came over to the Humane Society. I was there with Lieutenant Robinson from the sheriff's office. We had animal control, and we had Aaron. We have all worked together on crises in the past, and we got right to work. We came up with a logistical plan. We all agreed that the dogs' health and well-being came first, and that investigation and prosecution would follow behind to build the best case that we could possibly build, again, without getting in the way of the treatment and the health issues related to the animals. Aaron did a fantastic job with his organization. County Executive Bob Culver had some of his folks, his emergency management folks, come over to the site, the Humane Society site, where they, again, had about 310 dogs, many of which were still having puppies. So, the number's probably going to hit about, maybe 330, I would estimate, just an estimation, because so many of the puppies were giving birth. But we pretty much all lived over there for, you know, for a couple days until the crisis abated. What the investigators did was, the first thing I did was, I called, figured out who the expert was in the state of Maryland on these large animal neglect cases. Adam Lippi is a person who is assigned, they have a dedicated animal abuse and neglect prosecutor in Baltimore County. So, we immediately got him on the phone. He's been a consultant pretty much every day in how we investigate and prosecute this case. We set this up a lot like a large-scale child abuse case, where each dog was treated as an individual. Each dog was immediately numbered, their collar, the numbers were on the collar, and then we would create a file for each dog. Each dog was photographed. The most serious dogs were, we used a GoPro video camera to videotape the dogs, so that, you know, there would be no question as to their condition. And then, we had a veterinarian inspect the worst of the, you know, the worst dogs, you know, that had, we had dogs that had missing feet, they had been chewed off in the cages. We had dogs that were just, again, sitting in their feces for about a year. The puppies had not been wormed, so you had the worm issues, and again, all of that had been photographed for evidentiary purposes. Investigators, again, just like a CAC case, we go all the way around. So, there's investigators working on the financial piece, any advertising, any sales of the puppies. So, all that is, all that data and information's being collected, and then around 30 to 45 days, we will meet, we will evaluate all of the evidence, and then make charging decisions. In terms of the Humane Society, I mean, it was definitely a crisis situation, but it was, you know, it was a group of folks that came together over there, and they planned. They planned this out, how they were going to respond. Again, County Executive Culver's helped with the emergency management folks that were able to work on the logistics and find shelters that would take animals. So, Dorchester County, animal hospitals in Delaware, Maryland, all over the shore, were contacted, and they took our animals. We went behind them and talked with some of the shelters, and we're following up with the rest of the shelter state, but some of the shelters were also told how to uniformly keep the files, so that we could get neglect cases from their, you know, their work as well. We are going to make personal site visits to those shelters and pick up their files for the purposes of prosecution. The whole time this is going on, the Humane Society and the Animal Control set up the cadre of their, they have solid volunteers over there, and they lived over there. And then, as more and more volunteers piled in, because we are Wycomico County, and this is a beautiful county, and there are so many, so many people who are interested in helping the animals, they brought supplies, they brought so many supplies that they filled up two cubes, you know, the first, the shed, two cubes, and then they were going to get another cube, and they realized they had so much supplies, they were going to need a tractor-trailer. So, Purdue was called. Purdue brought a tractor-trailer over, and again, the executive's office gave them permission to park the tractor-trailer there that is just full of supplies. Those supplies are for our animals and also going to be distributed, they're going to distribute supplies to those shelters that took the animals. On Saturday, I know $10,000 of donations came in just on Saturday to the shelter. By the end of the day, they had over $10,000 in cash and check donations to the shelter. So, again, I don't speak for the Humane Society or Animal Control. I can only tell you what I observed. Our office has been there off and on every day. Tim Robinson, the sheriff's office, has been there every day, and Animal Control, the work that they've done, just to give you an example, two of the worst dogs on Saturday, so, and we've been there over the weekend, too, the whole team, two of the dogs were groomed on Saturday. It took them about three hours to groom the two dogs that were being groomed simultaneously. That's how delicate and how difficult it was to just get all the hair shaved off of two dogs.
And these are small dogs, too.
They're small dogs. They're Pomeranian, most of them are the Pomeranian breed. There were a couple Chihuahuas, there was Shih Tzu, a couple Shih Tzus, but mostly Pomeranians. And they have not been socialized, so, you know, really, the first human touch that they've had, you know, was after they've been shaved and they could be, you know, touched, and all the volunteers are helping just socialize them. They're going to need foster homes for these dogs for the socialization process. Some of the dogs, I heard, may be available for adoption starting this week. I don't want to speak for Adam, but I think that was the plan, because, again, we told them prosecution and law enforcement function comes secondary to, let's get, these dogs have suffered enough, let's get them, we're going to have plenty to go on in terms of prosecution, but let's give these dogs the best life we can now that they've been through this trauma.
If the public is interested in helping donating, what's the best place to contact?
It would be, they would contact the Humane Society. There's people answering the phones, contact the Humane Society, and then if any neighbor or citizen has any evidence or observation of what was going on, or tried to purchase a dog, or did purchase a dog, they should call the sheriff's office and ask for Lieutenant Tim Robinson. He's heading up that part of the investigation. So, anybody that has any information at all, don't leave it on the table, call the sheriff's office, and they will be happy to take your information. I do know that Lieutenant Robinson's been out to the neighbors of, you know, again, they're doing a 360 investigation, so that no stone is unturned here.
Counsel, have any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple questions. You somewhat answered them indirectly. I do want to thank everyone that was involved, your office, the sheriff's office, emergency management, all the volunteers. A lot of people really care about animals, and they think a lot of animals. Sometimes, they think more of an animal than they do a person, because there are a lot of animal lovers out there, especially for dogs. And I saw one of the TV stations had the post, and it pretty much went viral. There were people in Texas talking about it and sharing it, so you're probably getting donations from people across the country, so it's actually a good thing. And I was going to ask about the adoption. I didn't know if anywhere adopted out yet, but it sounded like you, it's not going to happen until they're socialized, and I forgot about the psychological part of the animals and make sure they're in good health before you can adopt them out, so it's, it's a good thing. I'm very appreciative of what everybody in the county has done.
Well, thank you, and I'll certainly, I'll certainly pass that on. I am, too. It's incredible, the job that you did. But you have to remember, with ours, so the public understands, the dogs that remained at the shelter, there were about 110 dogs that remained at the Humane Society, they were the ones that were the worst off, and the most work had to be done with those dogs. I do know Kim in Delaware, they are adopting dogs right now, but those dogs were some of the, you know, they did almost like a triage, and those dogs were really the dogs that appeared to be the healthiest. The dogs that we have, I mean, they had to be wormed multiple times, they had, you know, every dog had to be vaccinated, and then their matted hair was, I mean, again, like I said, three hours, I watched as they worked on two dogs for three hours, just to get the hair off. So, again, they're going to get those dogs up for adoption at the earliest possible convenience, but certainly not so the dogs are a risk, you know, to any owner or to themselves.
Well, many thanks going out to the other agencies that partnered with us to take these dogs, because our Humane Society can't do it alone.
Yep.
Way too many dogs.
And the community, let me tell you, every day over at the Humane Society, the parking lot has been packed. Everyone is pitching in and going, not just for these dogs, but to also do the work that they need to do anyway, because our Humane Society, you know, we have a very large, very busy Humane Society as it is, without having this crisis. So, you've had the people pitching in that have really been put to work doing all those other functions that the Humane Society does here in our community. I think one of the silver linings is the awareness that is out there now about all these citizens that went over to the Humane Society that know exactly what they do now and how lucky we are to have a Humane Society like the one we have here in Wycomico.
This unfortunate circumstance has brought attention to the Humane Society, which is a good thing.
Yes, yes, I agree.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, thank you for the opportunity, and I guess this concludes my business with this, counsel, maybe excuse?
Yes, absolutely. Appreciate it.
Thank you, man, judge. You're not in court.
Next item for council's consideration is receipt of the fiscal 2017 annual operating budget, the county executive's annual operating budget. This comes to you in compliance with section 705D of the county charter, and actually, the budget was received yesterday afternoon. I believe this might be the first time in my recollection that it's been submitted early.
Good job. Would you guys care to come forward and make any comments? Good morning. I guess if you guys would introduce yourselves for the viewing audience.
Wayne Strasberg, County Director of Administration.
Leslie Lewis, Director of Finance.
Great. We'll be as brief as possible. As Matt mentioned late yesterday, we delivered Executive Culver's recommended 2017 annual budget along with UNICEF details and the workforce salary schedule. Good news is, for the second consecutive year, the executive is proposing no increase in our tax rates. Total revenue projected for 2017 is just over $135 million, a $6.2 million increase versus last year, or 5% in terms of percentage. The improvement is derived from slightly higher property tax receipts resulting from a 1.3 increase, percent increase in our real property base, a 10.5% increase in local income tax receipts generated by improving employment, and a $1.4 million increase in our state disparity grant. Unfortunately, despite Governor Hogan's budget proposal to increase highway user revenue, our state allocation has remained relatively flat, necessitating the use of general revenue and reserves to maintain our roads and associate an infrastructure. You will also note, as you go through the budget details, that the Civic Center budget includes the estimated net profit from the proposed sale of alcohol at appropriate events. On the spending side, 83% of our recommended spending is for education and public safety. There is an increase in the maintenance of effort calculation for the Board of Education that is due to increased enrollment. There is an increase in the Warwick appropriation. We have included the launch of the Warwick tuition scholarships. We have appropriated an additional $255,000 to the library, and we've included the FOP step increases that are called for in our collective bargaining agreements, our previous agreement and the current agreement. We're also recommending a 3% COLA for county employees, as well as some pay scale adjustments, particularly in our lower, our lower-scale employees. We've got some wage scale compression there, and we marked to market, and we felt that some increases were appropriate. It should be noted that the budget includes $8.3 million in non-recurring and capital expenditures. I will remind you that our shortfall in highway user revenue is $6.2 million. I think you'll see that our use of prior-year revenue and reserves is, I believe, $6,184,000.
Pretty close.
Pretty close. We asked every department to reduce operating expenses where possible without negatively impacting services to our citizens. We believe all our various departments have performed well in responding to that request. As required by the charter, the budget is balanced, and our opinion makes the appropriate commitment to an improved quality of life in Wycomico County within limits that are fiscally feasible and prudent. We look forward to council work sessions during which we can discuss these matters in further detail, but if you have any questions today, Leslie and I are happy to answer.
Senator Council?
What about the fire service issue? Is there money in there, you know, in case, you know, the study comes back? I mean, is there money to deal with that eventuality over the next year, or is that just?
That would come from contingency. I mean, there's really no way to forecast what may or may not result from that, so if it were deemed warranted, then we would come back to council and request a transfer from contingency.
Is there any increase in roads funding, as far as paving roads?
I believe we're relatively level to last year in our roads funding, Joe.
Which we did accomplish.
We did quite a bit.
Fair amount of paving, yeah.
We've done quite a bit.
Yeah. Any other council questions, comments?
I think the employees will be appreciative of the increase, and I'm glad we met the sheriff's office, their request.
All right. Well, thank you, and we look forward to our work sessions.
Absolutely. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, supplementary to the budget presentation, the actual mechanics of the budget is a legislative bill. After you complete your deliberations, that legislative bill will be for your introduction at the next meeting.
Okay.
And, of course, the blanks won't be filled in until those numbers are determined. Subsequent to this, you will hold a, you'll set a date for a public hearing, that does not have to be done today.
Okay.
And you'll have work sessions, as usual.
Great, thank you.
The budget is to be adopted by June 1st. That date may be extended by the, a resolution of the county council to June 15th.
Okay.
If the council is unable to adopt a budget by either of those dates, then the budget as submitted by the county executive will be automatically adopted.
Okay. Thanks for the warning.
I don't expect to go that far.
Next on your agenda is Resolution Number 49, 2016, at the request of the county executive approving a food service agreement between Aramark Corporation Services, LLC, and Wycomico County, and authorizing the executive to execute the agreement.
Okay, I see we have Mr. George Kay here with us. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 49-2016?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you for considering this request. We are asking this contract be considered outside the normal bidding process, and I'd like to go over the points that bring us here. In the correctional environment, an effective security classification programs, medical service, mental health services, food service, and a responsive maintenance program are our cornerstones. Under the conditions that one could approve a contract without the bidding process, it addresses maintenance. This current contract that concludes June 30th was competitively bid in 2010. Aramark provided the service for the last six years. In that contract, they were required to make significant capital improvement investment, up to $120,000, which they made up to $100,000, because that's what was needed at this time. And in addition to maintaining the dietary operation, they had to maintain all of the equipment that are used in food service production. The way the agreement was crafted, after five years, it was amortized out, and now it's all county equipment, but they maintain that equipment whenever there's a problem. This is a benefit, because since they're responsible for the equipment, they make sure that it's being treated properly and they use it properly, so we have fewer repairs. Controlling costs is another factor. During the last six years, using the CPI food index, it's called Food Away From Home, which is the criteria for them to ask for requests, that has increased annually 2.35%. The 20-year average was 2.7%, but we've had a slower growth rate, as you all probably are aware, in the economy. But our costs per meal have stayed just under 2% in our current contract, so we've been able to negotiate better than what the inflation rate is. And I would add that during the last six years, like, two years into the contract, we added staff meals into this agreement, so we're also covering those, and we've never gone over budget. You might ask, why are we providing staff meals? Correctional officers work an eight-hour shift, they don't have a lunch break, so, and in order to control contraband and food from coming in, we provide the meal. It's pretty much a standard in any correctional environment. We've been through three correctional standard audit cycles with Aramark, and they've passed 100% in every audit the last nine years. This is critically important in terms of security with tool control, controlled knives, equipment, and those kinds of things. It also makes sure that there are not any caustic materials they use are well-controlled, and that they're providing a dietitian-approved meal to our population. It gives us peace of mind, knowing that we're, they're not only effective in our facility, but in other facilities here on the eastern shore, they're also, have been 100% compliant in recent years. Another consideration is disruption of service. There have been several counties on the eastern shore who have gone out to bid in the last several years, and the bids were awarded to other companies, and in two of the three counties, Aramark came back and was brought back in to address the problems and reestablish the food service in those counties. I'd like to stress this, because the disruption in food service, and I would compare this, for instance, to medical. In my former life, I had experienced more with medical contractors changing. If I have a sick person and there's a problem in medical, I can take them to the hospital. In food service, though, I don't have too many options when we have a disruption in the service. And going through the, that process of dealing with an unknown entity, you know, presents the potential for a disruption. And then, if they don't work out, and you have to bring them back, you have another disruption. So, this hopefully could be addressed or avoided by this. The new proposal also includes a capital investment of over $75,000 to replace our three walk-ins. We have a freezer and two refrigerators that are used, and that would be, they would be replaced and maintained by Aramark under the provisions of this contract. And they also happen to be our commissary service provider. And they also happen to be our commissary service provider and provide our inmate banking services, so having them as a package, it, it does make it more efficient and it helps them be more cost-effective as well. Questions?
We've used Aramark for a long time, haven't we?
Yes, we have. They were there for, when I got there.
Way before you.
Yes.
Right. Have we ever done food services in-house using inmates?
Well, actually inmates do work in the food service. Yeah, we, we, that helps control the cost. We do provide all the basic labor to do. They're supervised by Aramark staff, but we're actually the, the workers. To my knowledge, to answer your question, no. It's always been contracted out from the beginning and, and if you'll come to the facility, I can show you our, our kitchen's about the quarter size of this room. It was never designed to be a production kitchen and that's what we're doing now.
I've, I've taken tours, but I don't remember the kitchen part.
It's very small.
I'm gonna have to run by there and get a tour, so I appreciate this.
Yes, they do a good job in a small area.
Yes.
In answer to Mr. Dodd's question, food service for the detention center has been contracted since that facility was built. Prior to the construction of the current facilities, when the jail was on top of the old courthouse, food service was provided in-house.
In-house.
That was before nineteen ninety. It would probably be very impractical to do in today's world.
Okay. Thank you.
That's some good history there, Matt. Thank you.
What's your population?
Today, we're about three sixty-eight, I think, something like that. It, it changes by the minute, but that's about it.
Mr. Hall?
George, I have a question. Nice presentation, thank you very much, but I have a question about the equipment management section. If I read this correctly, the replacement additional or replacement capital food equipment was a hundred thousand dollars in the contract the last time and this time it's seventy-five thousand. Do you anticipate any additional costs over this seventy-five thousand for replacement of kitchen equipment?
At this time, I think we're in pretty good shape. You know, like what we have is well-maintained. There might be a couple of small pieces of equipment that might need, like a ice machine might go or something, but they have to either fix it or replace it, so it, it's, it's included in that language.
So I guess the main question here is, does anybody have an issue with not following the typical procedure for this and sticking with them? Okay. I'm good.
Mr. President?
Does this need a?
The county charter does make provisions for the request that's being made. It's under Section eight oh two B of the county charter.
Would you like me to read it to you?
I beg your pardon?
I have it pulled up. Do you want me to read it?
She can read it to us.
Very good.
Okay. Eight oh two B says, "Upon request by the county executive stating fully the reasons why any single purchase or contract requiring sealed bids or proposals after due notice is impractical, considering the costs of operation, maintenance, downtime and service, if any, submitted to the county council, then upon the vote of five members, said council may direct the county executive to make said purchase or contract without compliance with the terms and conditions of this section." That, that's the part.
Is everybody satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay. So we've had a motion and a second. All in favor of Resolution number forty-nine dash two thousand and sixteen, please say aye. Any opposed?
May it be a roll call vote, please?
Roll call?
Please.
Okay. Larry? Ernie?
Aye.
Yep. Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to come back. Do you want me to leave and come back or? Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Do you want me to leave and come back or just?
Yeah.
Next item for council's consideration is Resolution number fifty-two thousand and sixteen, at the request of the county executive, authorizing the executive to accept a grant award from the governor's office of crime control and prevention under the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Okay.
As our humane society crisis brought awareness to the, the problem with puppy mills and things like that, it's not news to anyone, I'm sure, here that heroin addiction, opiate addiction, prescribed medication, opiate addiction is a major, major problem in our community and in the state and the nation. It's epidemic proportions. Vivitrol is a drug that is, and it, it blocks the receptor cells in the brain from experience, sending the body the, the message or signal of euphoria. So when somebody is in treatment, and this is considered medication-assisted treatment, and they're using, and they're on prescribed Vivitrol unlike methadone or suboxin, they're really drug-free and they can use and consume opiates, but they get no euphoric response. The, the potential is they can overdose and die because if they take, they keep trying to take it. You may recall from history, back in the seventies, Anabuse came out for people with alcohol problems and it was used. Vivitrol is basically a time-released shot that works like Anabuse. It's the same medical or chemical compound, but they've fashioned it into a shot and it's gonna be incorporated with very intensive outpatient treatment. So we have a, we've partnered with the health department who'll do our initial screening and assessment of individuals and we've partnered with Eastern Shore Psychological Services here in Salisbury, who is one of the two Vivitrol providers in the county. And they're gonna come in and do orientations with our population and identify those people who are willing. They have to go through a medical screening to see if they're gonna be eligible, but this is considered in our country today, the, the biggest evidence-based treatment for opiate addiction that's been successful, hugely successful, like changing people's lives for the good and making them productive again. And we have, with sixteen thousand dollars that we got from GOCAP, we have the potential to treat up to a hundred people this year. And it's been well-received and supported by the state's attorney's office, the courts, the judges, everybody right now is extremely excited that we're launching this program. Real quick, another initiative that we have launched this year was Narcan Training. If you're familiar with Narcan, it's unfortunately after the fact, when they've OD'd, they get a shot, but everybody who leaves goes through training and the ability to acquire that medication to treat somebody they, they know, but we're really excited about this and we hope we'll be able to expand it in the future. And you can see by the amount of money, even if we don't have a grant, it's very doable, so.
A hundred people, is that enough?
Well, the funding was for a hundred, but if, let's say we had two hundred, the providers agreed to treat them at no additional cost.
Okay.
So that was like, you know, they said beyond eight people in any group at any time, they could go up to ten or fifteen, whatever, they're not gonna charge above the eight.
Great.
So we worked to negotiate a very good deal with the provider, but they're very committed to making a difference and helping people and that was what impressed us about them.
Counsel questions?
Yes, and Mr. K., I can't pronounce your name.
George.
Never could.
George. Warden George, you know.
The sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, is that all for this Vivitrol?
Actually, the Vivitrol itself, the pharmaceutical company gives it to us.
Okay.
It's a very expensive shot. On the street, it's about a thousand dollars a shot.
Wow.
But while they're incarcerated, they'll actually give us the medication. They, and they've been doing this around the state.
So where exactly is that money going?
The money is going to provide, to pay for the blood tests that have to be done. It's gonna go to pay for the urine testing that has to be done because they have to be clean before they can go on the program. And the balance, about, about ten thousand of it is going to be paying the contractor to come in, do the orientations and all the initial enrollment in the program, which they gave us an hourly rate that was pennies. I mean, you know, you couldn't get.
Sounds like a, a good program that we're continuing.
Yes.
Are these for inmates or are these patients gonna be referred to?
Well, we're starting it off with our sentence population and, and then to the extent we can, if we can start to include some of our pre-trial, like I have somebody right now that is on pre-trial, who tested positive yesterday and they're like, can I get on the Vivitrol program? They're hearing about it, you know? They wanna go to court clean, which is, you know, what, what the goal is.
Well, I wish it success.
Thank you.
Any others? All right. And we do have to go back and have a motion to introduce Resolution fifty dash two thousand and sixteen.
To move.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any other questions? Do you need a roll call for this? No. Okay. All in favor of Resolution fifty dash two thousand and sixteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the president votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Harris, I see nothing on the agenda review.
Easy day for me.
Okay. All right. At this time, we're gonna move into public comments. If anybody has any comments, please make your way to the podium. Please remember there is a three-minute time limit, so we're gonna try to keep this rolling. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Koknisky and I live in Rockawakan Village in Hebron. And last time that I spoke with you, I was here representing myself and today I'm proud to say that I'm here to speak on behalf of a newly-formed group, Rockawakan Citizens Against Industrial CAFOs. Our group is comprised of various citizens on the west side of the county who are against the CAFO on Rockawakan Ridge Road and Levinde Shale Road. We are organizing, we are meeting and we are going to fight this project. We have a petition that I have here that I'm not gonna submit today because I wanna send it to you certified mail so that you can say that you received it. And our, our petition states that we have a right to a quality of life that includes a right to excellent air quality, water quality and preservation of our property values. We demand that a moratorium be enacted, that the county is being short-sighted and allowing an industrial CAFO in a designated growth area that is less than two miles from hundreds of homes, a public school and Rockawakan Creek, which has been deemed a critical waterway. The county should enact two different zones for agriculture. One zone would be light agriculture, which we're all familiar with and we deal with now, and the other zone would be industrial agriculture, which is what this falls under, which would be located in the further reaches of the county and not near schools or subdivisions. The current proposed zoning that you're trying to act is not sufficient. We're requesting better zoning with more barriers and berms at the very least and we feel that you're hanging the county's hat on an industry that is unwanted by hundreds of your citizens. I've had people come and knock on my door. I haven't even had to really do anything for this petition. People have found where I live and they've come in their cars and they've knocked on my doors and they said, let me have the paper and sign it. The west side is growing. We have new businesses, we have growing subdivisions, but all of this is gonna come to a screeching halt if you do not protect that area. I ask that you hear the voice of the people that elected you to protect our interest and stop this from moving forward. Our county should be focusing on ecotourism like rails to trails, family destinations and microbreweries, not industrial agriculture. Our county's growth and future depends on luring young affluent families here and industrial agriculture is not gonna do that. It's gonna cause, you know, like I said last time, the youth of the day to flee. Let's capitalize on some other things that we have available in our county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Margaret Knight. I also live in Rockawakan Village and I'm here to support Nicole and the rest of our subdivision, but not just ours, but the, those that are surrounded. That new factory that you're talking about, I think is just gonna really hurt the quality of life of not just me personally, but the citizens that live in the surrounding homes. There are some beautiful homes that are gonna be less than probably a mile from that, a half a mile, and I think it's just gonna destroy those people. I know I spoke to you, Mark, on the phone and while you listened, I, I felt I was getting nowhere, that it was a done deal. I really hope that you all will really consider the citizens that pay taxes and have been paying taxes. I've lived in the county for twenty years and I wanna continue to live there, but I don't want to smell chicken farms and, and I really don't wanna smell one that is brought in by people that aren't even gonna live there and aren't, aren't family farmers. I'm all for family farms. I understand that we're in the chicken business here on the eastern shore, I get it, but it shouldn't impact all your citizens. I think what Nicole said is really very important, that if we wanna bring in tourism, that we really need to consider what these factories are gonna do to the quality of life of not just us, but people that wanna visit Wycomico County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, members of the council, my name's Charles Woodward and I live at seven two seven seven Levinde Shale Road, just a half a mile or so from the proposed industrial chicken growing operation. I want to say that I'm opposed to this proposal. The reasons are many, air quality, water quality, real estate values, zoning, traffic safety, to name just a few. Let's take zoning. The county prepared a Salisbury Metro Core Plan for this area in August nineteen ninety-seven to lay out a plan for the growth around Salisbury. The Metro Core extends westward from Salisbury past this proposed industry and out to Rockawakan Road. I'm sure you all are familiar with the plan. You've probably read it, it's online, it's a hundred and eighty-eight pages, anybody can find it. According to your plan, this area was designated for residential expansion of Salisbury. I brought along a few quotes from that plan. Chapter three, page nine, "The overall goal of the Metro Core Plan is to create an attractive, healthful and stimulating living environment." End quote. I personally don't think that an industrial chicken growing operation was envisioned by the people that wrote that statement. Chapter three, page ten, "To manage future growth of the Metro Core in a manner that permits the efficient expansion of the existing urban core and results in urban and suburban neighborhoods that are appealing places for people to live, work, shop and recreate. To preserve prime agriculture and forest land in the county and at the same time promote the orderly growth and development of Salisbury region by encouraging non-farm or forest-related uses to locate within the Metro Core." Chapter three, page eleven, "To protect residential neighborhoods from encroachment by commercial and industrial activities." End quote. This all sounds great on paper, but what was or is being done to make it come true? The area is zoned R-20, the purpose of which is, and I quote, "to provide for low to medium density residential development." End quote. But lo and behold, any kind of agriculture use is allowed. So was anything done through zoning to achieve the goals of the Metro Core Plan? Apparently not. You know the person responsible for an accident is the one who has the last clear chance to avoid it. Someone has been asleep at the wheel as far as zoning is concerned and you gentlemen have the last chance to make it right. I'd also like to say something about traffic. Levinde Shale Road was not constructed to handle the increased volume of traffic that this proposed use will bring. The second phase of the west side collector, Naylor Mill Road, was completed, which has greatly increased the traffic flow already. The road surface is uneven and there are areas which pond badly during rain events. It can't be safe to add all this increased truck traffic. If this proposal does go through, I would suggest that at least the developer of the project be forced to make some improvements to the road, at least between Rockawakan Ridge Road and Naylor Mill Road. This is certainly not an unprecedented practice and, and it would be a responsible thing to do. I would also suggest that parts of the road be controlled so as to force the trucks to use Naylor Mill Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Bill Satterfield. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, three nine two two Colburn Mill Road. I'm also representing Delmarva Poultry Industry Incorporated where I serve as executive director. I'm not here demanding anything. I have a request. We've heard in- We've heard in this meeting today, in this room a number of times, and in other venues, some words that, to me, have no meaning. And I don't know whether they have meaning to you or not. Mega farms, mega houses, industrial CAFO, we heard that this morning, factory farms, industrial farms, foreigners. I'm not clear what those words mean, and I don't know that you know what they mean. Maybe you do. But to me and a lot of other people, they, they're made-up words that really don't have any official definition. And if they do, what are those definitions, and who decided that those are the definitions? And I was struck by that as I was reading over the weekend Mike Huckabee's book. He's a former governor of Arkansas, and he was writing about the use of words. And I just wanna read, because I thought it was especially pertinent to this discussion on this issue, and what do words mean. He says, "The one thing I learned," and this is on page 54, "The one thing I learned from my competitive debating days in high school and college was that the debate can't, cannot begin until a definition of terms has been agreed upon by both sides. Allowing one side to dictate the definition of the terms means a default victory for the side that sets the terms. Control the definition of terms, and you win the debate before it begins." End quote. And I think that has relevance, because we hear these terms, and we're talking about family farms. CAFOs, yes, have a definition, concentrated animal feeding operations. That is defined by the federal government. But as I explained a few weeks ago, a farm with as few as two chicken houses can be a CAFO. So that's just a term used by the government for the issuing of water pollution control permits. These other terms, I think we need to understand, all of us, not just those throwing them out, what they mean. So I would, I would ask, not demand, ask, that you all have that and keep that in mind as this debate moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Nichols. I live on Rockawakan Road, 20 years. I love it out there. I don't complain about the smell of chicken houses. There's no chicken houses close to me. People come in the community, and they build a house next to a chicken house. They're from the city. They don't wanna smell chickens. Well, I didn't build a house next to a chicken house. They're gonna come in and build them next to me, which I don't like. There's a lot of reasons, and my friends and my neighbors have told you all some of the very important things. I don't have any fancy words to tell you, and all these terms that we hear about CAFO and all this kinda stuff, that's all fine. But that's not, that's not the place to put this chicken factory, meat factory, chicken meat factory. This meat isn't even gonna help us going overseas. People that own that property there on Levinde Shield live in New York. They don't care what happens to Wycomico County. They could give a darn. I do. I love this county, and I love this state, and I wanna live here, and I wanna live without what they're planning on doing down the road. Thank you all for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comments today?
I didn't have this planned, but I just wanna say, I don't know how you can call these operations family farms when there aren't even residences located on the property. There's no one living there. They employ a farm manager, which is someone that comes there one time a day to check and make sure that everything's okay. It's not a family farm when there's no family residing there. These are gonna be owned by people, and I'm not gonna say foreigners, because I don't have anything against foreigners, because my husband's grandparents came over here from Italy as foreigners, and it's foreigners that made up this country. So I'm not gonna go on about foreigners, but I am gonna go on about residents of the county, or residents of the state. These people don't even, they don't live here. They have no interest, invested interest, in our, in our county. And I wanna know what exactly is it that we stand to gain, because I don't see anything other than a lot of disgruntled residents and us hanging our hats on an industry that's virtually gonna cause the demise of so many other opportunities for the county. I don't understand why you don't understand this. I mean, I literally lay in, I mean, both of my parents are dead. My father was president of Farm Credit Bank. He was involved with the Delmarva poultry industry. He was chairman of the Delmarva Chicken Festival. I lived on a chicken farm, and this is not what I grew up with. I'm sure, there's, you know, I've, I've spoken to some farmers. They're scared to death that if they say something, that they're gonna lose their contracts and not get chickens. I've talked to other people. They're petrified of saying, of standing up and saying something. Well, I don't have anything to lose, other than my quality of life, and I'm gonna stand up every single time in front of you and, and say something until the deal is sealed, either way. Because if I don't, I can't live with myself, because there is something rotten in Denmark here. You know, and I'm happy that, you know, I'm, I'm, our poultry industry, it has contributed a lot to our community, but I also believe that what we're doing now is gonna contribute to the demise of the Chesapeake Bay farmer. They can't compete with these big operations. Anybody that looks at the farm market sees that when you get too much corn or too much soybean on the market, the prices go down. It's gonna be the same thing. This is like the Walmart of chicken operations. You know, I mean, it's the Walmart of chicken operations. We're gonna put the small guy out of business. Aren't we trying to revitalize our area here and bring in more small businesses and shop local and all about that? What about that movement? Is that being totally ignored here? Because I don't see any of that happening, and I'm very disgruntled and disgusted, and there's a lot of other people that vote in this county that are disgruntled and disgusted, but they don't have the fortitude. I had somebody leave a note on my front door yesterday that touched me very deeply. They said they were an elderly citizen, and they didn't have the zip in their step anymore to go out and pursue this, but they thanked me for doing it, and they wish that they could do it. And I live in a multi-generational neighborhood that is gonna be affected on a lot of levels by this junk, and that's just what it is. It's junk. And you guys need to see what it is. And some of you fellows on here are young, and you may have other political aspirations, but I'll tell you what, I'll make it my last dying goal, see that you go no further than the council.
To correct the record, Executive Culver and I met with the developers of this project, two very nice people, and they are, in fact, planning to build a residence on-site, live there with their two children, and perhaps when we assert facts, we should check them before we assert them. Thank you.
Give us the facts. Why isn't it on the building?
Any other public comments? Okay. Council comments? All right. I don't have any comments today, so we are going to, kind of a motion to adjourn, followed by an open work session on the Maryland Department of House and Community Development, 2017 Community Development Block Grant application, a conference of plan, open work session, and an airport commission update, followed by an administrative closed session with internal order.
You have a motion to move into open work session.
Second. Second. All in favor? We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Need a motion to adjourn.
You didn't? We did. You were sleeping.[1778.65]